First we'll stand and say the pledge of allegiance. So first, we have the approval of minutes from May thirteenth and May fourteenth.
So moved.
We have to do them separately.
Oh, I apologize. Okay. The approval of the meetings from May thirteenth.
So moved.
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I abstain. I wasn't present then. And now we would like to do the approval of the minutes of May fourteenth.
So moved.
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained for that one?
Oh.
Can I abstain, or is it two peoples enough? Because I wasn't there. I did, well, you know what, I'll vote in favor.
We could wait for Tom.
Tom will be here. We also have the, I wanted to address the minutes from April twenty-third. On those minutes, there was a small error. It said that the five-year total for the bus bid was the amount that's actually the one-year total. And I'd like to entertain a motion to correct that.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Do you want me to read it?
No, no, I just want to ask Sharon if she is.
Yeah, I checked with her. And so it would say the one-year bid total is $2,295,751 and does not include any optional equipment, instead of saying five-year. Okay? And then we'll go back to the May fourteenth minutes when Mr. Murphy's here. Okay? Vote on switching it?
Yep.
I'm sorry, we need to vote on the motion. I apologize. And there's a motion to amend the minutes.
And seconded.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
We're all good.
Abstained? Four zero zero. Thank you. Anything else on minutes for now? Okay. Is there public participation from someone on an issue that's not listed on this agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Please come up. Can you please state your names and such? Thank you.
Hello, my name is. Oh, thank you so much. Hi, my name is Megan Warsham, and this is concerning Francis Wyman and the school sizes for the third grade.
My name is Carrie Callahan. It's for the same matter.
And Maureen Trobridge for the same as well.
Okay.
So we know that this was brought up at the, I think, the last meeting a couple of weeks ago. And we just kind of wanted to reiterate our concern here with the large number of class sizes, with the class size, particularly with the third grade with being over twenty, I think it's over 21 students next year is projected. And I know that there was some talk about it. I just didn't know what the updated status, if there's any way that we could see if that could get changed, because I know the budget just got approved recently. I just wanted to see what was going on with it at this point.
Okay.
If you have anything you want to add.
We just become aware of this about two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Our children have all flourished with that extra classroom. They still have a larger classes, like eighteen. And I definitely want to keep that number low, especially for my son where he does so well with a lower teacher-student ratio, as many children do. But I still want, getting lost in the shuffle, you know?
And I think we had kind of assumed we would have been brought into the loop as the parents of the second graders when that shift was happening, going from the five down to the four. We knew eventually it was going to happen. And we knew it was budgetary. We knew something would happen eventually. But we were kind of blindsided, I think, by it, where all of a sudden it was trickle-down effect that we now figured it out and like, whoa. This is kind of catching us off-guard, knowing that some of us have other children in other grades where they're one of sixteen. And just being a teacher, I know budget, I totally get it, class size. But when you look at the elementary, that is where a huge amount of growth and knowledge and the teacher-student ratio is so important to be kept low, to keep the investments in school and the love of learning. I teach middle school, so my numbers are higher, but you expect that, and it's heaven's love. But it is very important that that passion that those teachers have to focus. I mean, our teachers have been amazing.
Yes.
And just knowing you're then spreading it out over that many more is.
Yeah.
It does take its toll on students and teachers.
Another concern is that we're building all this housing, especially over by the Wegmans area. These kids are coming over to Francis Wyman, so we're going to have more kids dropping in possibly next year. So that anticipation of the class sizes, that's a big concern for us as well.
Well, I mean, I think it's pretty clear that this committee has made a commitment over many, many years, long before I was on the committee, to try to keep class sizes down.
Yep.
And I think, I know historically that there was more effort to keep the class sizes small in grades kindergarten, first, and second. And that the third, fourth, and fifth grades have gotten a little bit, you know, have been, had a little more flexibility. I've heard Dr. Conti explain that also. And, you know, there are years, as you know, where there's a bump. So we're not happy about these numbers. But again, and I think Dr. Conti's also mentioned that if in September we find that there's an influx in a grade that's packed, you know, if we have to go back to town meeting to ask for another teacher, we may have to do that. As you know, space is also an issue.
Yes.
I want to give Dr. Conti an opportunity to say, if he has any other responses that he'd like to make.
Well, I think there's two parts to your point. One is the class size and one is the communication. So I'm saying, again, the communication happens over time, and if you felt you were left out of that, I apologize. That's on me. I'm looking sort of at district elementary, not necessarily from your perspective, but that doesn't mean I shouldn't have communicated. So I think the communication piece, I'll take some responsibility for. The class size piece, I'm not going to argue with you. I would lose the argument, nor would I support it. So I'm saying I agree with the points that you're making. The guidelines that this committee has, contractually is much larger, but by practice, you know, eighteen to twenty-two is sort of the boundaries that I have to work with. And given the budget that we have, sort of, I'm where I'm at. So that's the challenge. So would I, if there were unlimited budget, would I add a teacher? Again, absolutely. I'm not, like I said, I'm not here to argue your points. I think they're important points, and I think overall, our class sizes are something that have been a priority, and you've experienced. So that's what I'm struggling with, is I'm not sure I can solve this problem, given the financial parameters that we have. We have maintained our numbers, which I think, given the budgets we have, is, I think, took a lot of work. And one of the things we're looking at is maybe try to provide an assistant, I know, for third grade to work with the teachers. Again, I'm not sure that's ideal, but just to offload some of the, maybe some of the tasks that the teachers have. So we're looking at that, but right now, I don't have the latitude or the budget to add a position, because we'd really have to add two. Because the Fox Hill numbers are exactly sort of right in line with the third grade at Francis Wyman, so I couldn't add one and not add the other. So it's really two elementary positions that I think we've discussed with this committee, in terms of where we're at. So again, this is, I'm sorry, but that's where I am. And again, I think you're right in your argument. I just don't have a solution for you.
So basically, what you're saying is, we should probably check back in in September, when they have the numbers actually for the school year.
Yeah.
And then we can talk with you again if the numbers are high, although you'll see it for yourself each way.
Yeah, and again, I think the commitment from the committee, we always have fluctuation over the summer. If we have a whole lot of third-grade move-ins, for instance, I think this committee has gone back to town meeting in September and asked for an additional teacher. But we're getting very close to the crossroads where, even if we could add another teacher, we're running out of space to add it. I know we have one more classroom that we've been using, but we're at the point where we're going to have to start displacing music and some other things if we get more elementary growth than we've seen. So I think that's the commitment right now. So again, that's what you guys have told me. So, and that, you've done that in the past, so we have gone back in September. So.
I believe that happened with the incoming kindergarteners when it was their year.
Yeah, they added it in September, I believe. Yeah.
I just want to give the other committee members an opportunity, if they have any other comments.
Just a quick comment. It's not unheard of that we go back to town meeting if the numbers come in higher than we anticipated over the summer. So I would invite you to come back in September. We'll take another look at the numbers. And if they're tweaking up even higher than what we have right now, I think there'll perhaps be an appetite on the committee to go back to town meeting and ask for some additional funding. Town meeting isn't really in favor of us going back in September or October for more money. But, you know, we're not afraid to ask. They could say no, but if the numbers go up, I would invite you to come back in September. Thank you.
I think it's all been said. I feel pretty bad that we can't just pop in two more teachers and bring the class sizes down. So if I were in your shoes, I'd probably be hoping to have about ten more kids. Yeah, it's just at the moment, our hands are kind of tied.
So it's basically that twenty-two is that threshold number, that if we got over twenty-two, that's where it would be potentially reassessed? Is that pretty much what I'm hearing?
Potentially.
I know it's all potentially, but that's, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think the guideline that we.
Yes, okay.
I think the contract says twenty-six.
Right, but you told me not even that.
Yeah. It's eighteen to twenty-two, and we like to keep it closer to eighteen. And, you know, this time, we ran into a wall.
Yeah.
Yes, Mrs. Russo.
We, at Fox Hill, ten years, your first year, I think we went back to town meeting in September. I wasn't on the boards the first year. We were here in Burlington to have stunned that they went back and added a classroom for the kindergarten there. So it has been done. I heard Ms. Marcus speaking with you earlier with regard to the guideline, how it's set. It's really important moving forward, that we have stronger conversations and that we do have parents involved and advocating with us for the higher guidelines, too. So we really appreciate you coming out tonight and sharing your concerns and stating so. Well, why our guidelines are what our guidelines are, and now I'm talking about the classroom size, not the money size. But, you know, because it's hard, I think, unless you're in that classroom, or unless you're working with your child, to quite understand why you can't just hand out some worksheets and move about. But it is truly important, especially at this age, as they're learning how to read. Parents advocate all the time, and people advocate all the time for, I want my son or daughter in the small hockey camp, or in the small band group, or in the small, and it really should carry over into the classroom, too. You know, that same sort of philosophy. So I appreciate you coming here and hope in the future we'll be able to meet those needs.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Yes, I want to thank you for coming, because it's important for us to be reminded and hear, because, you know, Dr. Conti's looking at the whole district, and obviously, you're concerned about your child. And we are, too. And we want to make sure that we address all the children. So thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else here for public participation on a topic that's not on the agenda? Mrs. Marcus?
I just didn't know whether there were folks in the back. I didn't want to have to.
Okay.
Good evening.
Can you introduce everyone?
Yeah, that was part of it.
Okay.
I was going to start with, you know, good evening, and be polite.
Okay, good.
Diana Marcus, instructional coach here.
I want to introduce yourself real quick.
Yep. Hi, I'm Deborah Wall. I'm the ELL teacher at Fox Hill Elementary School.
So this was not on the agenda, but I do know that the school committee likes to highlight positive contributions made by our educators at your meetings. And I think that the work that Deborah has done with the DESI Teacher Advisory Cabinet definitely is a great example of what happens when we allow our educators to be part of the larger conversation in the state. So I'm going to let Deborah tell you a little bit about her experience this year with the Teacher Advisory Cabinet.
So again, hello, good evening. I'm Deborah Wall. And I'd like to thank the district administration for their support of my attendance at Teacher Advisory Cabinet meetings this year. And I hope to be able to continue on next year to complete my term. Burlington was fortunate to host the year-end convening of both the principal and teacher advisory cabinets last week, bringing together educators from across the state. And it was an honor to have both the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Commissioner Jeffrey Riley and the Senior Associate Commissioner Ventura Rodriguez here as district speakers in the district. I facilitated having the meetings located here in Burlington, and I would like to, again, thank the district administration for agreeing to host and finding a location for what turned out to be a highly successful day. Members of the Teacher and Principal Advisory Cabinets share their insights, their suggestions, and feedback with DESI to help refine current policies and to inform the development of new policies and resources at the state level. And the Teacher and Principal Advisory Cabinets have been providing input to DESI since 2012. And over the course of this year, I've been able to learn more about and contribute to education policy. Among other things, for example, two items that will be forthcoming are an observation feedback form that incorporates content-specific information, and also the statewide vision and blueprint for English learners' success. I've also been able to collaborate around strategies for educator voice and diversity. A resource for principals regarding cultural proficiency and characteristics of culturally responsive learning environments is coming soon. And additionally, there have been ongoing discussions around increasing the diversity of the educator workforce, as well as attracting and retaining educators. And finally, a very valuable component of the work was being able to network with and learn from educators from all over the state and other DESI representatives. So I thank you very much for your time this evening, and also thank you again to district administration.
I also had the opportunity in the past to serve for two years on the DESI, we call it the TAC, Teacher Advisory Cabinet. And I'm hoping that the district will continue to support Deborah in participating next year, so that she can do the full two years. You can see that, in fact, the topics that are discussed are pretty high-level. When Deborah says that things are forthcoming, they actually create deliverables, so you actually, they actually help to form policy and also recommendations for how to implement it. And it's a great opportunity to have our teachers right there in the center, being part of that conversation. So again, I'm glad that I had the opportunity. I'm glad that Deborah's had an opportunity so far. Generally, people serve for two years, and I'm hoping that you'll support her in doing a second year, so that she can continue to represent Burlington that way.
Well, thank you for coming to share that information with us. I really didn't know about the Teacher Advisory Committee Cabinet, Cabinet?
Yeah.
And I hope we'll be able to support, and I'll let either Patrick or Eric talk about it in a minute. But it's very encouraging to know that these conversations are going on, and the topics that you mentioned are all really important topics. So thank you for your efforts and time on that.
Thank you very much.
Are there other comments from the committee, or?
Thank you.
Dr. Conti, or Mr. Larkin?
No, it takes extra time. So it's not like people don't have full-time jobs already, so thank you for your extra time. And I do think having Burlington Voice at the table is always important. And again, so I think, thank you for doing it. It's not something, it's always something extra, right? It's an addition, too. So I think that's an already busy schedule. And I think we liked hosting, and I know that was your idea, and you brought them here, and I think that puts the district and community in a good light. So really appreciate it.
Well, thank you. It's because I know I have a very supportive district, and so I knew, you know, it was a possibility to bring it to you. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience for public participation at this time on a topic that's not on the agenda? Okay. Then we're going to go back. We had a motion to approve the minutes of the May fourteenth meeting. And there was not as many people as we wanted for the vote, Mr. Murphy. So if, I think the motion's been made to approve the minutes and seconded. Are people ready to vote at this point? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Aye.
And the chair abstains. Three zero two. Thank you very much. Yeah. Okay. Now, on the information and reports, I see that our student representative, who's practically graduated, isn't here tonight. I did hear, I was not at the last school committee meeting, but I heard that Arya Nagraj had been elected to be the new person for next year. But he was also elected to a statewide position at the State Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So he's not going to have time to do it. So do we have a new person yet? And who would that person be?
It's going to be Bridget Conceition.
Bridget Conceition, all right. Well, that's cool.
Wait, wait. So there was a state offer and a local offer?
Yeah, and he took the state contract.
Oh, man, that kid. He's in trouble.
I just want to congratulate Arya on all of the wonderful things he's gotten involved with. I know he had something to do with finalizing the state social studies standards. He had concerns about the way the ancient civilization of India was being portrayed, and he got involved. And now he's going to be on a state board, and we're just really proud of him. And we look forward to having Bridget Conceition join us then, next year, for our meetings. Maybe over the summer. I don't know if she's around. No, we don't do it in the summer. Okay. So there is no student rep tonight, but lots of great reports. Are there any subcommittee reports tonight? And no one is in attendance from the Ways and Means, unless somebody from the administration has any other updates for them?
No, obviously, we've just gotten through town meeting, and we did send a thank-you note to town meeting that you all copied on. And I just want to reiterate that that we don't take the support of the community for granted. And I know we have some growing pains that we are going through, but the town is very supportive of schools. And I just want to acknowledge, again, a tremendous amount of work by the Ways and Means Subcommittee. And then just want to thank overall town meeting for their support of our budget, our warrant articles. And that sort of sets the stage for next year. So anyway, I just want to say that.
And I would add also that the time and effort that's put in by our school Subcommittee of the Ways and Means Committee is just remarkable. And their help this year, a very difficult year, was very much appreciated. The full Ways and Means Committee takes time to deal with this. And again, for the whole committee, I'd like to thank town meeting for all their support for the schools. So is there anything else in those categories? So now, under instruction and technology, Dr. Conti, would you like to introduce?
Yeah, Madam Chair, and I see some folks in the audience, and I know they're here for the middle school schedule. So we do have a guest, Patrick, so if, I'm going to jump around a little bit, but we're going to be joined by Patrick Barbieri. And then I promise we'll jump to the middle school schedule, so you don't have to wait through the agenda, and then we'll go back, if that's okay, Madam Chair, with you.
That's fine.
Okay. So Patrick Barbieri is the Executive Director of LAB. LAB, L-A-B-B-B. Lexington, Arlington, Burlington, Belmont, Bedford. Those are the communities, and Patrick will give you some history. I think you've spoken in front of this committee, Patrick.
Two or three years ago.
I think it's a little longer than that. I think time goes by pretty quickly. But LAB has just done, again, does an incredible job with our program. If we, again, if we consider we have a spectrum of programming, we work very collaboratively to make sure that we can fill in all the gaps in LAB. I think we have a very complementary relationship. As you know, in April, when the school committee reassigns Subcommittee members, I represent this committee on the LAB Board and work with Patrick regularly. So Patrick, I just wanted to introduce you to the Burlington School Committee. You've recently relocated your administrative offices right here to Burlington High School, so welcome. And I know you're talking about doing some program expansion, and just wanted to have you talk to the committee and maybe answer some questions.
Sure. Well, thank you. The LAB Central offices are now in Burlington, which has just been tremendous. So working with Burlington and being on campus in a public school is great, because the LAB Central offices used to be in a, just a building. So being in a public school building is so much better. Our students are coming down, they're working in the office. So it's been a great year so far. So I'd just give you a little bit of history of LAB, that I think probably best, if I just give you some of the updates on some exciting things that are going to be happening in the future. It just benefits all of the LAB members. So LAB's been around for forty-five years. So we actually started in seventy-three, seventy-four. Currently, we have about three hundred and twenty students. And our students, you know, from the disabilities range from students with multiple handicaps to students who can go to college. So it's really a wide range. About forty percent of our students are on the autism spectrum, from elementary to high school. All of LAB's philosophy is that all of our programs are in public schools, and that's really unique for a collaborative. I think we're one of the only two collaborators out of the twenty-six in Massachusetts that actually have all of its programs in public schools. And that really benefits our students a whole lot. We've been doing that right from the beginning. Our philosophy hasn't changed. So what I wanted to share about what we're doing now compared to what we first started off with forty-five years ago. And LAB started actually in a house in Lexington. And it started because three parents got together, and they wanted a different type of programming for their sons and daughters. Two were from Lexington, another parent was from Arlington, and collaborators didn't exist. So getting together and doing things together really kind of took some creative people to talk and actually get it in motion. So what they did was they ended up convincing a few people from the two districts that this would be a good idea. They rented a house in Lexington, which actually still exists today, where LAB students live in there. And they created a program that was academic and vocational. And we think today, well, that's what everybody does. But back then, nobody did it. So there were five students with a husband and wife who actually lived in the house. They taught them all the academics, they found the students' jobs, and they just started to develop a program. People started hearing about it, and it just started to grow. And from there, Lexington, Arlington, and Burlington were the first members, was LAB. And that was really the crux of how LAB started. And I don't think that we've really got a whole lot away from what our philosophy is. Academics, vocational training, and also recreational social skills is extremely important. We do a lot of that after-school weekends. We go away. We go to, went to Ireland a few years ago. We go to Disney World every year. We do camping trips. These are skills that just help our students be more independent. So that was, maybe we had ten students then, now we have about three hundred and twenty, but we just do it on a larger scale. Most recently, and I've been talking to the Board of Directors a lot about, you know, what our mission, you know, needs to be to really help our students be independent in the future. And it kind of took us back to how we got started and, you know, working with the students back in the house. And I have a sister, actually, who went through LAB. She's forty-two years old. She lives in a house with five other LAB students in Lexington. And so, you know, you learn a lot, you know, when you grew up with a sister with special needs. I'm now her legal guardian. So now I started to learn about the post-twenty-two world. And we're somewhat disconnected. You know, we're three to twenty-two, and all of a sudden, everything drops off. And I think that we struggled with that a whole lot, because our alumni in LAB is really, really big. We do alumni dances every year. It's about two hundred and fifty students that go to that. It's really amazing. We're actually doing two of those a year now. We have a LAB parent-alumni group, and we just sit around the table and talk about what their needs are, because they don't change a whole lot. I mean, they actually get a little bit more difficult. But we needed the LAB community to really be a resource for everybody else coming through the LAB program. So we, you know, when our students graduate, where do they go? They could have a job, they could go on to college, they could go to a day hab, some type of adult center. We started to pursue looking into what it would take to do an adult center as a collaborative. But the law blocked collaborators from doing that. On December thirty-first of this year, they actually changed that. On December thirty-first of this year, they actually changed that. Not exactly sure how all that works, but somehow it changed. And I come to find out, you have to do eleven-year contracts if you actually start an adult program. So, talked to the board, they were very supportive about it. We got the paperwork in the next month, and just last Thursday, we got approved. So this is really a huge step, and actually, for the services that we're going to help our families with. Because the biggest fear of families is upon graduation. I've dealt with it for, this is my thirtieth year at LAB. I still deal with it with my sister, so I can really, you know, empathize with what's going on. And, you know, things could go good for a while, but things change. So LAB being able to create an adult center, now get into the post-twenty-two world, there's so much more that we're going to be offered to our graduates. Now they'll know, maybe, this is going to be a good program for me to go to. I'm hoping, you know, we've kind of talked about having a building within Burlington, because just of the businesses around here would be perfect. So we're going to start this from ground level, starting in September. Actually, the contract starts July first, and we just hope to grow it from there. But the parents that we've been talking to and the support that we've been getting has been huge for this. So, the LAB communities that are all part of what we do, the parents are really excited about this. So, that's one piece. When I was talking about the house, how we first got started, we also were talking about students living independently. And of course, one of our main objectives is, you know, how do we help students be as independent as possible? And, you know, in the classroom, when you're teaching these skills, and we go out in the community a lot, you know, we're doing these after-school trips, going away, there's nothing more real than actually learning these skills in the environment. So two years ago, we went to Lex Hab, and they had a house that was available. It used to be used by TIL as a residential. And we asked them, I went to the TIL Executive Director, Daphna Kraut-Gordon, who, they have about fifty-five houses that they actually manage for adults with disabilities. And I said, what happens if, you know, we work together about creating some type of partnership where LAB can use the house during the day, full-time, for our students to be able to, you know, cook, do the laundry, just learn how to be in a house and be social as well? And she loved the idea. So we met with Lex Hab, they loved it, you know, they said, you know, go for it. We did a lot of rehab on the house, it was a lot of fun, our students were involved, so they felt like they owned it. So right now, our students go there every day. It's used, I mean, people are fighting for the house. We'd have to get another one pretty soon. But it's really somewhere where the students like to be. From there, what we did was, since TIL had the expertise with the house being used on weekends, we created a program where parents can have their son or daughter stay over on a long weekend. We're now, well, we're on our fourth week of, we've done four weekends so far. We think that probably within the next year, we'll probably have at least half the year filled every weekend. And sometimes, this is the first time that, you know, the parents are away from their son or daughters. And the good news about it is that it's either LAB staff or TIL staff that are there, working in the house. So there's a comfort with the parents that are going there. Since our alumni is big, we agreed that it would first be available for current LAB students, eighteen to twenty-two, and LAB alumni, and TIL agreed with that. So we're getting a whole lot of influx of parents now hearing about it. And I think, again, because they're starting to get older, and they're trying to think about, you know, what's the future going to be like, this is going to be a big step for them. So, parent alumni really been helping with this a lot, too, because they've been taking advantage of it. So those are kind of the highlights of LAB, and it's kind of a going back in history, because those were the most important elements. And we're doing, you know, forty-five years later, we're doing some of the same things, just on a bigger scale. So, again, this is for the LAB community, and we hope to just expand it and take it from there. And also, being in the post-twenty-two, being a vendor, that's, we had to bid for it. It gives us other options, recreational options for students post-twenty-two, which we've already started to do. Housing, if we decide that we want to manage houses for students with disability, we could also do that. And of course, the adult center, which is during the day, once a student turns twenty-two. So, it's all very exciting. If I come back here in a year, hopefully, we're just, it's just ramped up, and a lot of people are hearing about that, so.
Madam Chair, I'm going to pressure Patrick a little bit more here to get further afield. So having LAB here in the district has also allowed us to collaborate on some professional development. So Patrick's done a lot with, LAB has a leadership team with some staff members and Patrick called the Mind and Body Team. So we've started to collaborate on opportunities for social-emotional training for our staff and the LAB staff collaboratively, because the increases in student anxiety and trauma are sort of common between both of our organizations. And I think the training's been sort of highly sought after and very positive. So again, thank you for that. The committee, I'm sure realizes, but maybe the general community, while there are five communities that are LAB members, of the three hundred-plus students, there are many that don't live in those five communities. So I think you told me there were sixty-two districts last time?
Seventy, seventy.
Seventy districts represented in terms of in LAB. So it's, again, it's not just the five communities that send students. And I think it's a testament to the quality programming that LAB provides, that seventy other communities are desiring to participate. It also gets to my point sometimes with the state ratios, that they often give us guidelines that assume a random distribution of families. And I would say that's just not the case, because of programs like LAB that are such high-quality. There are families that move into the five communities just to have access to those programs. So I think that it's always something that we are mindful of. Another collaborative effort, and I'm overusing that word, is transportation. Would you just take a couple minutes and just talk about that? Because I think we're going to be looking to maybe utilize LAB services for transportation moving forward?
So, special ed transportation is always a tricky thing, and most people want to avoid it. We, LAB does two types of transportation. Probably about thirty years ago, we have twenty-five vans that we use to transport our students to work sites. And when we had those vans, it was strictly used for vocational sites. And we thought, you know, we can use these vans to transport our students to school and drive them home, utilizing our staff. So we did that. We grew it, and we tried to transport as many students that attended LAB from one of our member districts to and from school. And that worked quite well. About ten years ago, there was a bid that went out to the state, asking if collaborators wanted to get involved in network transportation. So we immediately raised our hands, and we wanted to get involved in that. We had three districts, Burlington, Lexington, and Arlington, that were interested in collaborating on this. So we started as a pilot for twenty-five students. We did it as a bid where we bid up to vendors. LAB hired the transportation coordinator, that could really be the buffer, rather go into the central offices of the districts to solve the problems. And we grew it. Now we have about five hundred students that are being transported in district and to out-of-district placements. So, really, what, you can increase the numbers, but the quality has to be there. So, being responsive to the districts, to anything that happens, you know, we're right here in Burlington, which is great, our transportation coordinator is here. So just solving problems all the time around transportation really works. So it's been successful, because we ramped it up. We just didn't go from twenty-five to five hundred, it just slowly built, so.
At the five hundred now?
Yeah, about five hundred, yeah, yeah. So, again, you know, we just want to make sure that it's quality, and we want to make sure that our members are getting the service. So, I know Burlington had talked about putting more students on the runs for next year, and we just kind of preparing to do that, and, you know, we'll be ready to go. But it's a great service, and the nice part about doing competitive bids, it really drives the cost down. So from all of our, what we've seen in the past, what we are paying compared to now is significantly different. So, it's been a good project.
I actually don't want to take your whole evening, but if you could maybe, for people who are watching, talk just in general about the types and range of programming that the LAB collaborative offers. I mean, we talk sometimes about the programs here in Burlington, because some of them are located here. But as you said, the others are located in other public schools in our five-member districts. But if you could kind of survey that for us, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
So LAB is kind of like an hourglass, as far as programs, why, you know, we have programs at elementary, a little bit smaller at the middle school than we have mostly high school programs. So most of our students matriculate from, you know, preschool to elementary, middle school to high school. As I said, all of our programs are in the high school. So, the general curriculum, the focus, the philosophy and the mission of LAB is really the same from elementary through high school, just that, you know, the way that we approach it changes. So, as I said, you know, the population of disabilities has changed. Autism has certainly, you know, increased significantly. So we just had to adapt to that. One thing that LAB, I think, we tried to keep unique is, when we place students in classes, since we have a wide range, we don't have one classroom to choose from, or two, we have a wide range. We don't say, you know, particularly, this is our autism classroom, or this is our intellectual disabilities. We really place students by social needs first. Because we really think that if they get into a group that they connect with, they have friends, that everything else will fall in place. So we've tried to keep that really pure. Sometimes we get the pressure to say, you know, where's your autism classroom, or where's this particular classroom? But we've continued to say that we've looked at placement referrals quite differently. Many people hear about our vocational training program, so that's kind of the, when students get to the high school level, we have probably twenty-five sites that we have students that go to every day. We have about eighty students that go to work somewhere within one of those work sites, depending on what their skills are. And our goal is to really, you know, the focus, it's like a triangle. We have the academics, social, and the career development. And, you know, we kind of look at where's that student's focus first. And usually, it's social and academic, and the vocational is up here. But eventually, when they turn sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, that starts to shift. And we start to look at the triangle a little bit differently. So, at the high school, it's not uncommon for a program, for a student, if they're sixteen, they're working one full day a week at one of our work sites. Then they're in academics for the other four days. As they start to turn sixteen, seventeen, you know, we encourage, you know, them to go another day, maybe. But depending on the student's needs and where they're at, you know, that could look differently. So it's really something that we've honed over the years, that we try to, you know, encourage the teams to look at where the students at. But for every student, that kind of, you know, map of what they're going through kind of looks the same. But, you know, we started a program five years ago called the ICE Program, the Inclusive Concurrent Enrollment with Middlesex Community College. We had a lot of students that had an interest in going to college, but going on their own would be real difficult. So we finally got into this grant, which, you know, took a long time. But we've had probably fifty students that have gone through the ICE program already. So that's a wonderful program. It's the only program where students can go to college and have an educational coach with them. Because if you just go on your own, they just don't allow another adult to be, you know, with a student in the class. So, that has been great. So if a student has an interest in college, we definitely want to, you know, have them go through the ICE program. But the programming piece certainly is such a long discussion, and it's very, you know, if you, we have referrals come in, you know, I explain to a parent, you know, what it looks like. Really, them seeing the classrooms and what goes on is, you know, important.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Are there questions? Did you want to say something?
No, when we close out, I was just going to give you a last chance to advertise the comic book store in Lexington. That's a great story, but you can do that. And then, one other thing, when, if the committee has the opportunity, or members have the opportunity, one of the frustrations that we went through is part of being a member of LAB means you have to commit school space for LAB programming, because they want the programming to be in schools. And again, I think it's a real strength. We've been fighting with the state always about everything, but the reimbursements from the state for new school buildings provides additional percentage points for regionalization. So when you regionalize, I think it was two extra points when we built the Memorial School and the middle school, we were arguing that because we are housing students in LAB programming that come potentially from seventy other districts, that we should have, again, maybe not two points for regionalization, but maybe one percentage point should be granted for the space that we are providing for LAB students. Because it's not just a benefit to the LAB students, it's a benefit to, it's a benefit to our students to have the LAB programming in our buildings. So I just think it's an argument we've been losing, but I think if, as we continue to do that, I'm assuming, as we're going to hopefully do some building in the future, that we will continue to petition. Again, it's a real benefit to have LAB programming in our buildings, but we'd like to see some additional reimbursement for providing that space.
Mrs. Monaco?
Hi. I'm familiar with, the programs have been for many years, and I just want to say thank you. LAB program's great. I know a lot of kids have gone through it, and I don't know whether they'd be without it, frankly. But I do have two quick questions. One is, I'm going to ask both, and then you can answer them. What is TIL? And the other one, what percentage of students are tuitioned in?
So, TIL is an organization, the acronym is Towards Independent Living and Learning. And they started about thirty-nine years ago, and they provide, they manage houses for students with disabilities.
Over twenty-two?
Over twenty-two, yeah. So, if a son or daughter that wants to live in a TIL house, I mean, the whole funding piece comes in, who's eligible. But, you know, they, I've seen a lot of them, I think they're the best. Just the quality of the houses that they run and how they manage them is just, it's incredible. So it's really nice to work with an organization that has a good reputation like that. And the person who runs it's very dynamic, and getting around the laws, not breaking the law, but getting around, getting around the funding, I should say, is quite tricky. Because, you know, it's not, I think the perceptions of what people have and what actually exists and what's possible is quite different. And I've learned a lot that, you know, from Daphna. So the question about the tuition?
What percentage of the students are tuitioned in from communities that are not LAB members?
About fifty percent.
Okay.
It's an interesting question, because of, right from the beginning, we took non-members. And it was about fifty percent, I have the first-class list. And we've always taken, you know, statistics on it to see how it's changed. It's really changed from like forty-nine to fifty-one, you know. I mean, it's incredible how it's maintained, you know, that, and we don't do that on purpose, it's just kind of how it works out.
Thank you.
Mr. Murphy?
Hi. Just a quick question, in echo, Mrs. Monaco, you guys do a great job.
Thank you.
I know from the Burlington standpoint, we've enjoyed the, being part of the program, and it's a valuable resource to the town and to the schools. People who might be listening at home, you've kind of touched on some of the adult programs, recreational options for people in that age group, that you're just kind of starting to move in that direction. Where would somebody go to get more information on that, and who should they talk to? Is that through LAB, or do you have, you have a separate organization for that, or how are you doing it?
So, yeah, they should definitely contact me if they, we sent out a newsletter with as much recreational resources as possible. And sometimes a parent will call me, and I'll kind of head them in the right direction. For LAB, we want to create that in this area. We've done it for almost forty years, and we've expanded it. We think that now doing this in the post-twenty-two world, that we can just make it a high-quality social, you know, right now, we have a huge alumni group that already gets together, the social. So we just want to bring more people into that, because it benefits all kids and parents.
It's clearly a huge need. And actually, that's another question, you mentioned the LAB graduates. I'm sure there are people living in town over the age of twenty-two now who might be eligible for this type of thing, who perhaps weren't LAB graduates, either they've just moved in recently, or they did something else. Is this, are you looking to gear this towards strictly LAB graduates, or just anybody of that age group?
I think they're LAB graduates as a base, and I think that that's good. But we've had students that... But we've had students that have been friends with students that didn't go to Lab, and they said, you know, can they bring them to the alumni dance, or other things that we did, and we said absolutely. We've, we did a transition fair for the second year in a row, and we found that, I mean, we started the transition fair for Lab parents. We wanted them to be prepared. We didn't want them to wait till high school. We wanted to start now. So we just brought it internal. This year, when we had it, we got more calls from outside people that had some connection to a Lab family, saying, you've got to come to the transition fair. And we welcomed them in, we said absolutely. You know, please come in, you know, with their friends, you know, as families, and their kids are friends, and we would certainly want them to benefit from that.
Thank you.
Do you have any comments?
Hello, thank you. I just want to say thank you for such an interesting, well-presented historical background. You know, I've been familiar with Lab, but not to this level now, and I just have to say how impressed I am with the, how, there's no limit in terms of what you're looking at and what you're trying to do for these people, the students' needs and families' needs. It's just the whole circle, and including the community too, that you're in. So I just want to commend you on the thinking, the listening to the needs, and then the carry-through with the high-quality programs. So it's excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Nelson?
Just a quick comment. Thank you for the presentation tonight, Patrick. Very, very enlightening. I've known some teachers who have worked in the Lab program at the high school level, and I've known parents who have had children graduate from that program. The biggest fear, as you mentioned tonight, is what happens once they turn 22, and to hear that you're working on developing some programs for the graduates, if you will, is just very exciting.
Yeah, absolutely.
Very exciting to hear that, and I thank you for your hard work, and hopefully it'll be as successful as the under-22 programs.
True. Thank you.
Are there other comments, questions? Thank you very much for coming.
Your advertisement, and then I'll let you go. Omar was a student with Lab since the middle school. Always had a fascination with comic books, and so when he came to high school, I continued, and he worked through our work sites, and he was great. And his senior year, right prior to his last year of 22, the parents came to me, said, we have this idea, we'd like to run by you, and it was opening up a comic store, because Omar loves to do that, and would you be interested in partnering with us? Absolutely. So fast forward, we worked together, they found a place in Lexington Center, they opened it up, got the sign, the historical committee to approve the signs and everything about it. Lab students worked there every day, Lab staff worked there on weekends. It's been a great thing, so the process is wonderful.
What's the name of the store?
Omar's World of Comics and Hobbies.
Oh, my sweet.
It's right off of, right where the lights are, on Waltham Street, right there, so you can't miss it. It's a nice blue sign, but, you know, that's a great partnership, where you can do something like that with parents, and everybody in the community sees it, so it also helps motivate other people to do things like this as well, so. They've got a lot of publicity with it, too, in all the papers, so.
Thank you so much for coming, and all the work you all do there at Lab and with us.
Thank you very much.
Patrick, thanks.
Thank you.
Field trip to Omar's, yeah?
Yeah. So I think we're going to go now to number six, old business, and we're going to start with the Marshall Simons proposed new 2019-20 student schedule. So do we, do we want to invite people up, or?
No, we can talk about it, and then you can certainly listen if people want to comment on what's there, so.
So we had a first reading?
First reading and a second reading, and I've had lots of conversations between the first reading and the second reading, and I think there've been some meetings that have occurred. And I just think the, I think there's been some challenges, but I think that the universal is, I didn't speak to anybody who wanted to keep the existing schedule. So I think that was the universal comment. I do think scheduling is about choices, and part of our challenge at Marshall Simons is we offer a tremendous amount of programming. So we're trying to fit a whole lot into a six-day rotation, and we might need to make some programming adjustments long-term, but I think it's not, it's just not about what other districts do, it's about the schedule they run and the amount of program that's offered. So I think that's sort of always a two-pronged approach. I also think that because the existing middle school schedule has been in place for so long, that there's some fear that changes that we make won't be adjusted moving forward. And I just wanted to remind the committee that Mr. Sullivan's going to be presenting a high school scheduling update, which I believe is his second over the last four or five years. So I think a good, sort of, a pretty typical conversation is going to be to look at the schedule, adjust, look at some of the limitations, continue to listen and speak to people, make some adjustments, potentially come back to the committee and talk about how programming is delivered. And I think there's a strong commitment from the administration to continue to have this conversation, and I think that's, and I don't want to say that's groundbreaking, because honestly, that's the bus leaving on time. We should be having these conversations all the time, and I think at the high school, it's a regular practice. I think we oftentimes make adjustments at the elementary school as well, and it's just a part of making sure that we're trying to optimize that. So again, I do think there are some individual subjects that are impacted, and I think we just need to try to live with the schedule. And at some point, we have to, and we, because again, I think what was universal in all my conversations is what we currently have isn't working. And we could make some adjustments, but it's going to cause problems, we're going to poke, then we're going to short-change another program in another area. So what I'd like to request the committee of is certainly, we need to listen tonight some more, but we really do need a decision, because there's a lot of communication that has to happen, there's a lot of work that has to go with building the schedule moving forward, and we really do need to start doing that work again. But I just want to reassure the committee that there's a commitment to continue to look at the schedule, look at the impact, and study it, and then to, and then to come back. It's not going to be a decade before we do that work. I think we'll look at it in the fall, as we move forward right away. And I do think the process that occurred involved, again, lots of teachers, and honestly, if, what I would have said going in, and I think it was a challenge going in, is it wasn't just about the schedule, it was about maintaining all of the programming that we have currently into the new schedule. And honestly, it would have been much easier for us to build a schedule and then talk about what programming to reduce or eliminate first. So I'm saying we didn't do that, and I think that was an extra challenge for the middle school to accomplish. And again, I think there's no perfect schedule, but I'd like to recommend the committee, certainly the proposal has my support moving forward, again, with the understanding that we're going to be looking at it very carefully in the first half of the year.
So would we, I'd like to entertain a motion, and then we can have a discussion.
I'd make a motion that we approve the Marshall Simons Middle School new student schedule as submitted in our package at our last meeting.
A second?
Okay. And now I'd like to open it up for discussion, and we'd like to make comments. Mr. Murphy?
I'm happy to start it off. I listened to the presentation at the last meeting, both from the Marshall Simons Administration and the school administration, as well as some of the parents who spoke as part of the discussion, and some in support, some expressing some concerns. But having listened and read through it, and continued to look it over over the past couple of weeks, I'm inclined to support the change as proposed. I think as the superintendent just alluded to, there's no perfect solution, and if you take something out of the left hand, it's, to fix something over in the right hand, now the left hand is short, and there's always going to be those situations where you're balancing priorities, you're balancing pros and cons, and you're trying to come up with a solution that benefits as many students as possible without causing the fewest problems possible, I guess is the way to put it. And I'm satisfied with what the Marshall Simons Administration has come up with, they've put a good faith effort into trying to do just that. I think we all expected with the change in leadership down there last year, that clearly there's going to be some changes, and whenever there's changes, there's always difficulties, and that goes with the territory. But I think what they've done is come up with a solution that's better than the status quo, clearly, in my opinion. There are tweaks that might have to be made going forward, as the superintendent referred to, and that's something that obviously we'll have to keep an eye on, but from the big perspective, I think it's a positive move, and I will support the motion.
And Mrs. Monaco?
Have there been any changes since it was presented to us?
My understanding is there have not been any changes since it was presented to you.
Okay. So I have some concerns. I understand that this is clearly a step, big step in the right direction. I think that the old schedule desperately needs to be changed, and that this is a good start. I am not totally comfortable that it's the best finished product. I am concerned about the languages. I understand that if you add up the minutes, it's equivalent, but if you are even better than equivalent, I think, from what you told us last time. But I do think that five shorter blocks for foreign language would have been better than four long blocks. I do have one question. The academic blocks are how long, most of them?
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four minutes.
Fifty-four minutes. Okay, so one of my gut impressions is that that's kind of long, just remembering back to my days in school. So I have a concern about the languages, and I have a concern about special needs students, because I don't like the fact that they have to miss so many specials for their pullouts, and there's a lot of pullouts. So I would like to make a request that in October, at our second meeting in October, if it would be okay with the rest of the committee, I would like to hear from the parties that have concerns, namely the special ed teachers, and anyone who has concerns about, I mean, the special ed parents, and the, and anyone who has concerns about the foreign language. I'd like to get some input at the second meeting in October. I figure that's almost a couple of months in, and people will have either said, yeah, this is working out, or they might not feel that way. I'd just like to hear what they have to say at that point in time. I would also, this is a bit of a tangent, but I would like to, if it's okay with the committee, go back to having an agenda item for the special ed PAC every couple of months, whatever they are comfortable with. Again, if no one objects. Because they are a whole new group of people from what, back when Dennis McCarron used to come to every meeting, and, you know, we had the agenda item. So I'm going to, I'm going to vote for the new schedule, but I think I've clearly expressed my hesitations, and I hope that we can see how it works out. Maybe it'll be great, and maybe no one will have any problem with it, and hopefully, if there are problems, we can make some changes.
Okay. Mr. Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I don't want to beat a dead horse. I agree with what Mr. Murphy said and what Mrs. Monaco said. I think that the old schedule, it was long overdue to revamp it, and I share some concerns about the new one. I think whenever you change a schedule as drastically as we're changing this one, it's good to keep an open mind, and as Eric has assured us, we're not going to review it in 10 years, as Mrs. Monaco recommended, and I agree, I think we should take a look at it in the fall, see how it's working out, and maybe get some further input. Because it's, I mean, it's hard to digest all of this, to tell you the truth, and to figure out how it's going to actually work in practice, and I think that after a couple of months, we might get a better idea if it's working, or whether it needs to be tweaked. So I will support it as well, but I echo Mrs. Monaco's request that we take a look at it in the fall.
Mrs. Russo?
Hey. As somebody who, for many years, has been advocating for a new schedule, I appreciate all the work and the time that has gone into this. I greatly appreciate what we have before us. That being said, as has been said, nothing is perfect with the schedule. I work across from a middle school, and when I subbed in a different town's middle school, I'm like, what? So I do like Mrs. Monaco's idea of having a follow-up. I don't feel really it's my position at all to figure out how this all works, but hearing back, because we have had a lot of emails sent to us, and we've had a lot of professional and very informative emails too, that it's more just to hear the progress as it goes through. And as the high school has moved along with their changes, I expect it would just be the same thing. You know, the language, it's something that needs to be spoken. I know when I was taking it, not speaking it a lot, so having that three out of six, depending when the weekend falls, I can see both sides of it. But then looking at where, where do you take? The allied arts are very important, and we don't want our students missing those either, so there's a very fine line that you've been walking, and you've been walking it very professionally and very nicely, so I appreciate that, too. So, thank you. You know, I am in favor of it, and I look forward to moving forward into the fall and hearing firsthand from my daughter, who's very vocal, and others on how that has been moving, too.
Mr. Murphy?
Just to follow up quickly on the suggestion that we have a review, I think that's a great idea. My only question is, is early October, or second week of October?
Second meeting.
Second meeting, October, yeah. Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you said the second week of October. I just want to give everybody enough time to get the program up and running before you're worried about making out a report card for it. To me, I think the more, we're going to get, in my opinion, more feedback and a better handle on it, maybe after the first semester type of a thing. I just think October might be a little soon, I'll defer to the committee, to the administration, if they think that's a good time to do that. But I think to try to get a handle on it, and then come up with tweaks to it before it has even really had a chance to get up and running, is going to be difficult and perhaps not fair to the administration who's trying to get the thing implemented and working. So I just throw that out there, I think October might be a little bit early. I'd rather do it, you know, after the Christmas break, or maybe over the Christmas break, or whatever.
I'd like to also weigh in on this question. I do think a review and a report next year is good. I also think October is a little early for this big of a change, and I think that the school needs time to live with it and work with it, and have report cards and ends of grading periods. And I don't know exactly the date that I would propose, but maybe we could task Dr. Conti and Mr. Larkin with proposing when seems like a good time, by the middle of the year, for example, is what I would be comfortable with. Did you have something else about that?
Yeah. I'm only going to vote for it if we agree to our, the second meeting in October, for the reason that I'm not looking to judge it, I'm looking to have input from the people who currently have issues. And so I'd like to hear from the special ed parents. And so I'd like to hear from the special ed parents at the second meeting in October, and if there is anyone who wants to talk about anything else, whether it's the world language or whatever. But my vote depends on at least some input at the second meeting in October.
Madam Chair, may I, again, I don't think we'll be able to, obviously, do a good job measuring the impact of the schedule in October, but I think we should be able to provide some information, Mrs. Monaco, about student impact in terms of how many students might be impacted and pullouts or things. We might be able to provide just some statistical information. I just, the vote tonight of the committee isn't the end of the scheduling work, it's actually just the beginning for Mr. Murphy and Ms. Purchase. So I think there's a lot of schedule building that has to sort of be put in place, and I think some of the answers or some of the fears that people have will either be proven out, exacerbated, or I'm hoping that some of them will be addressed. And I think we need to look at that. The foreign language, again, is a, is a larger programmatic conversation because what I'm sort of going to say, having looked at this, and not as in-depth, obviously, as the middle school administration, but if you want to have more foreign language instruction, which, again, I am all for, you're going to have to reduce programming some other place. So that's, would be the conversation from the school committee, is what experience you want to have. So is it possible that we expand foreign language, foreign language instruction or the number of times per six-day rotation? It absolutely is, but what I'm going to tell you is something else has to, something else has to go. So I think that's, that's going to be the dilemma, is what that programming is, and that might be something that you want to discuss. And again, I'm all for it, but I think that's, that's the conversation that we may have. Mrs. Monaco, some of the concerns about supporting students who need that support, I think we're going to have to, that's going to be an ongoing conversation, but I think we should be able to get you some, some information as the schedules get built in October. And again, we won't necessarily have an impact on learning, you know, an impact on learning conversation that early, but I think we should be able to give you some feedback on student impact.
So my point about that-
I didn't say that well, but I'd be-
My point about that meeting is I would like it to be an agenda item, so that the parents who have any concerns at that point or who have them now and maybe have gotten over them by then can simply give us feedback. I'm not trying to change things, I just want some feedback at the end of October.
Sure. All I'm saying is that we're not going to have huge amounts of student outcomes at the end. I mean, I think we can certainly tell you some of the early impact and, but we have to sort of build the student schedules first, and I'm just, want to just say, we're at the very beginning of that process, but we need the vote tonight in order for that work to take place.
In terms of the, the schedule, I also want to support the administration and the teachers. I think that I'm very impressed with the process that you went through. I did listen to the entire meeting last week when you made the presentation, even though I wasn't here, and I heard the concerns from the various, the parents from the, with special needs students, and I've received some emails and know about those concerns. But I think that it's important for us to go ahead with this schedule. I think some of the fears and concerns are, as we talk a lot, I mean, it's a change and we don't know what the change will be. I hope that I'm surprised, I hope that some people will be pleasantly surprised that by changing this part of the schedule, this other thing that we were afraid might happen, in fact, is not an issue. So, again, getting a report is a good thing and with, as Dr., if Dr. Conti's comfortable sharing information and if we want to put an agenda item in the, in October, I'm okay with that too. But I do think, I do support this, this schedule, and I think you've considered all the different options. And for students with special needs, those decisions are going to have to be made before September, and if IEPs need to be rewritten, then they need to be rewritten, and that would be a team decision. So I feel pretty confident that those issues will be addressed, and, you know, if there are problems next year, I'm confident that this is not going to be a schedule that's set in stone. So I'm also in favor of this new schedule. So are there other comments now before we vote? Are there people in the audience who would like to make comments about the schedule? Yes, please come forward.
You may remember me from last time. Beth Holburn was a parent, Burlington Special Education Parent Advisory Council. We did meet with, I want to say we, this is fact, did.
Yeah.
I unfortunately couldn't attend, but we met last week, and we were very thankful for their time. They went to some further detail about some of the things that they did to make the schedule and some of the detail that went into that. They invited someone from the CPAC to be on their subcommittee to review the schedule for next year, which is wonderful. I just want to reiterate, our concerns still exist. They were acknowledged very kindly, but they are still there. And I think having an opportunity to speak about how that's going in October is great. I also appreciate that in October, it's not going to be a well-oiled machine, I appreciate that as well. But the sooner you can address the problem, the better. I also want to reiterate that I'm hearing a lot of pull from the left, pull from the right, no one's going to be happy. But I can say that in special education, we hear that a lot. And the law, IDA, faith exists because schools have to make tough decisions and pull from the left to get to the right. And special education is often asked to be the one to pull. And these laws are there to protect these kids because they are particularly vulnerable and have extra needs that put extra strain on districts. And so I just ask that you consider the law and that type of stuff when you address changes such as the schedule.
Thank you. Are there other comments from people who've come to speak tonight? And so I would like to take a vote. So all those in favor of the motion to approve the new schedule?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the chair votes aye, so we support it 5-0-0. And we will also look for an agenda item in October to have further discussion and invite people to come and talk about what their concerns are and what their delights are, because I think we're going to also hear delights, but the concerns are more worrying. So, thank you also to the administration for all your work on this, and thank you to the CPAC parents who put a lot of effort into making sure that this will address the needs of all of our students, because that's important. Mrs. Russo, yes?
I just, before you leave, I just want to say the celebration of learning that was last week at the middle school, I just can't tell you how much I enjoy it. They were streaming in, and then there's a second wave around 7:30 with the next group of parents, but to see the middle school with middle school kids who are of an age where not everything is, you know, happy and glorious with school, to see so many families in there with their children, interacting with the teachers, smiling, playing games in the classrooms from social studies to math, it's just wonderful. I want to take a minute to thank those teachers for putting it together for the students, showcasing their work and getting an opportunity to explain to the parents all these amazing different projects that they had been doing throughout the year, because you don't, at the middle school, see it come home the way you do with the elementary. So I just, again, want to thank you, just to see such a community of the teachers, the students, and the families, parents together. So, thank you.
And along the lines of events at the middle school, I keep getting emails about a pie fest, but I don't know what it is. Can you explain what pie fest is and how I can get in on it? All right, thank you.
Disclaimer, this is Mr. Murphy.
He might have had something to do with it.
Something to do with it, his idea.
All right.
So, we have new leadership in our PTO this year, and I think they've really wanted to kind of take a more active role in doing fundraisers and sort of events than asking for just straight monetary donations. So, early in the year, we were kind of brainstorming, having conversations about what type of events we can do. We talked about what kind of happens at a lot of the elementary schools and what kind of successes they have, and we talked about things like the Francis Wyman Carnival and how each school kind of does something similar. So we were looking to do an event sort of like that, and there's been one event that's always been in my mind that I've wanted to do here, and, and that would be involving cow pie bingo.
Oh, no.
So, that is where the pie festival originated, is the main event of the day will be a cow pie bingo raffle. And for those who don't necessarily know what that means, you can just think kind of a Super Bowl square sort of type grid where people are buying kind of a piece of the grid. We are actually getting a cow and handlers from S. Saggy, which is now-
That was the easiest part.
That was one of the, everybody's like, where are you going to get a cow? And that was one of the easiest parts of the, the whole event. And so wherever the cow creates a pie-
It's to choose the winner.
The cow essentially gets to choose the winner, I guess we can leave it at that. So we're very thankful for all the hard work of the-
In what manner?
Don't even go there, Eric.
I think you, you of all people would probably have more experience with this than others here. Your southern roots.
So if, if people who are not families involved with Marshall Simons, is this something that's open up, open to everyone?
Absolutely, yes. So we're welcoming as many kind of people to the event. There'll be kind of food and music and bouncy houses and all the kind of things that happen at raffles and other things that'll be going on.
And what day is it?
June 15th.
June 15th.
Saturday from one to five.
One to five.
And I also want to give a huge shout out to our student council. This has been a huge collaboration. So the students actually also, when, and student council is relatively new and kind of re-energized thanks to the support of the district and the committee, and they, we went to one of their first meetings where there was this laundry list of everything they'd like to do, and they were like, oh, we'd love to do a carnival and games, and I was like, whoa, this is, this is a lot to take on. And this just became a natural partnership. So in addition to the PTO, I'd like to give a shout out to our student council and our student council advisors, Mrs. Evans, Mrs. Christine Evans, and Mrs. Virginia Bowlby. They have been kind of running with it and really, again, there's been lots of like, you know, Saturday morning coffees at Panera and a lot of planning that's been into this event, so.
Good. I think we have some more comments here. Mr. Murphy?
Getting back to the pies. I mean, it's an interesting idea. The thing that concerns me the most is this is something that Mr. Murphy has always been thinking about. It makes me wonder if perhaps he has a little bit too much free time in his hands. But aside from that, it's, it sounds like an interesting activity, so I'm sure it'll be very successful.
Mr. Nelson?
Is the cow going to be outdoors? Are you going to bring it to the gym?
Yes, outdoors, absolutely.
How much is a square?
Twenty dollars for a square. And we're going to kind of sell as many as we can, so we're going to basically build the grid off of however many squares we sell.
So you could have a thousand squares, right?
Yeah, so.
Well, Mr. Murphy and I are each going to buy a square.
So, okay, so you can, you can head to our, the, the PTO's Facebook page, there should be some information and links there. We have been kind of emailing and sending kind of information out to the, the school families through email and newsletters and things, but if you're on Facebook, you can find the PTO's Facebook page.
Is it like a 50/50 raffle type thing?
Yep. That's, yeah, so that's all, the bingo will work. And then there's also, we're receiving quite a bit of donations from the local community. I know that there's, you know, whether it's Wegmans or different local businesses, I know, you know, like Pop Warner, a lot of, a lot of organizations are donating money in prizes for other types of raffles and things like that, so there'll be all sorts of stuff there.
Other comments? Mrs. Monaco?
I'd really rather a different kind of pie. Maybe blueberry, raspberry.
I can make sure there's something there for you. If you promise to go, I'll make sure that there's a different type of pie.
It's going to take a special kind of cow.
See, I thought you were waiting to have a pie in your face, but maybe not a cow pie.
We already did that.
Oh, we did that. Okay.
And I think, so you don't have to be present, so if you're not interested in watching this happen, you're not old, you do not have to be present to it.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you. All right. Any more questions for our middle school administration tonight? No? Well, thank you very much for your time and all of your work.
Thank you.
Okay. So, shall we go back to number five, communication? Is that what we're up to, Dr. Conti?
Yes, we can.
Okay. And I think we have in front of us a list of some of the school, June school events, so.
Again, at this time of year, everything gets really jammed in, so I just wanted to make sure the committee members had a calendar, so the, the more detailed sheet at your seats is really put out by the high school, so it just talks about the senior events that are coming up, if folks have questions. And then Sharon, you put together the, the other grid, so thank you very much, Sharon. Just to let you know who's attending, what when, because of all the other events. And so I do want to thank committee members who participated in, I think there was a performing arts celebration, I think there was a sports athletic celebration for seniors. We have, this week, we have the scholarship awards night, which is on Thursday night, and then obviously you can, you can read down, read down the events, but it is a, it's a celebratory time and it's also a time where I, I hope that the committee members and the community can see some of the, I guess, what results from a lot of the, the meetings and conversations and the, and the, and the hard work of the committee. So you're, you're obviously all welcome to attend. I do think the, we are going on a tour of the Islamic Center that is on June 6th in the afternoon, around 3, 3, 3 to 4:30. So the Imam Shaqil is going to be taking us through, so if you're interested in doing that, that's going to be principles, but I wanted to invite you to that. And then the Simon Academy at Burlington, the Evening Academy graduation is Thursday evening at 6:00. If you have never attended that graduation, I would recommend it, it's, it's a, it's a great night, great event. So, again, along with the full graduation on June 2nd, which is on a Sunday. So, again, that was mostly just for helping the committee keep track of dates and events that are coming up.
I also want, I mean, all of these events don't just sort of happen on their own, so I also want to thank, most of this is through the high school, and I really want to thank all of the high school teachers and administrators who put the, go that extra mile and put out together these wonderful events for our student athletes, for our musicians and performers, for our graduates, for the scholarships, and all of those things that happen. It takes a lot of people working together, and so thank you to everyone for all of that. Are there other comments on senior events? And congratulate, I will not be a graduation this year, Mrs. Russo will be there since I was there last year, but I want to congratulate every single senior, because you made it. Good job. So now we'll move on to administration of medication to students. It was presented at the last meeting, and this is a second reading.
Yes, Madam Chair. First reading was held for this revised policy at the May 14th meeting. Nurse Leader Barbara Conley generated revisions to the administering, administering medicine to students policy and submitted it to the Wellness Committee for review. The Wellness Committee is submitting the proposed, the revised policy to the School Committee for approval. The verbiage in red will be deleted and the highlighted yellow text will be added as new language to the policy. Again, it's recommended, School Committee should approve policy JLCD, administering medication to students. And again, Barbara is just keeping up with all of the changes that are coming out of the state and making sure our policies reflect the most up-to-date recommendations.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that the committee approve policy JLCD, administering medication to students as presented in this evening's material.
Second. Okay, and I want to thank Mrs. Conley for all the work she's been doing to update our policies and making sure that they're accurate and appropriate and helpful for our students. Are there, is there a discussion on this? Yes, Mrs.?
Just a comment, I'd like to thank her too, for her attention to detail. She's, she's really good at it.
Any other comments on this issue? Then all those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that's 5-0-0. Chair votes aye. That's 5-0-0. Thank you very much. And now, we will go to new, back to new business, or no, go to new business. Sorry. And we have the out-of-country student and staff travel. Dr. Conti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The out-of-country student travel for French has been withdrawn from the high school. So, the out-of-country student and staff travel approval that we're seeking, Principal Sullivan has submitted a request for out-of-country travel approval for Burlington High School students and staff to travel to Germany and Prague during the April 2020 vacation. This trip aligns with Burlington High School's Junior Year World History II curriculum and the Massachusetts Social Studies and frameworks. And again, that's been, that's been part of the packet. Again, there's no fiscal implications as tour participants are responsible for all travel expenses. And it's recommended that the school committee approve out-of-country travel for Burlington High School students and staff to Germany and Prague between April 11th and 19th, 2020.
So moved.
2020, okay. All right, comment, question?
Just a question. Is the, are they withdrawing the trip to France or they just weren't ready to present it yet?
I think they're withdrawing the trip to France.
That's too bad. Any comments on this trip to Prague and...
Just for, that had nothing to do with Martha's visit there, did she?
We were banned.
That's right.
Did it cause any problems or anything?
I was hoping I could go back again next year.
They're on to you now, Martha.
Uh-huh. Okay. All right. So, do we have a motion? Or you just made the motion? No?
That was made by Steve.
Okay. So, any other comments? All those in favor? Chair votes aye. That's 5-0-0. Thank you very much. And then, the next item is continuous improvement for the school district and the school committee discussion.
Do we have any out-of-state traveling requests?
We do?
We are going to Arkansas.
Ah, that's right. There is a request for out-of-state travel for Dr. Conti.
That's actually foreign travel.
At least it is in Alabama.
Yeah. So, Governor Hutchinson is putting together a National Computer Science for All conversation. I think that's in two weeks, Sharon. Right? So, I leave Saturday and come back on Monday, I think. So, it's...
Have a good time.
Conference is what, Sunday and Monday? What is it? Sharon, is that correct?
Yeah.
And I'm representing the state. So, what, MASC is covering the expenses. And so, with your permission, I'd like to go to Arkansas.
So moved.
Do you want the permission?
We can vote it down.
Vote it down, please.
It is, yes.
Is this Superintendent of the Year business?
No. No, that business is done.
President of the Superintendent's Association business?
Yeah. This is, this is trying to expand the Computer Science for All effort in Massachusetts. So...
To Arkansas?
Well, again, it's a national conversation that Arkansas is hosting.
Have fun.
Great. All right. We have a motion on the floor. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sharon. Good job.
Yep. Okay. So, now, we'll have a conversation about continuous improvement for the school district and the school committee. So, I'm gonna start the conversation. I've been on the committee now. This is my fifth year. And I've been very impressed with what I've, I came into and the kind of work that we do. And I'm always looking for ways to improve. And so, I'd like to have a little conversation about ways that we can continue to improve issues, things that are going on in the district and with the committee. And one way, one way that I've, I've been working on, I've gone to a couple of the, well, I think I've gone to all four of the MASC conferences since I've been on the committee. That's the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. And I've gotten a lot of good ideas that I've brought back to share. And they, I also have noticed that the MASC organization has a lot of resources. And I, I think that even though things go well here, that sometimes we have a habit, we have a way of doing it. And sometimes it might be good to look at alternative or new options. And I'd like to have a conversation about whether we might want to talk with them or other, other resources of ways for us to continue our improvement and to continue to make the school district work as well as it can and help as many of our students as they, as they can to reach their ultimate potential. So, I want to open up that discussion with folks.
And Madam Chair, just before the committee discusses it, I just think the MASC divides up the state in sort of regions. And we're fortunate in Burlington that the MASC sort of representative for us is a woman named Dorothy Presser. And I've known, or known of Dorothy for quite a long time. And one area that I think MASC could potentially help this committee and certainly help the central office out is looking at our policies or doing a policy review. And just it, it would be an extra resource because we have tried to go through all of our policies in the past. And we sometimes get bogged down in some of the language. And I think having someone helping us do that work might be, again, might be sort of a targeted way where we can get some, get some support. So, that doesn't need to be groundbreaking. It may not be something that we have to change or shift or do something that's very major. But I think an area that we could use some support on, again, in my humble opinion, would be on some of the policy updates that we're looking at. I think we have individuals looking, again, we just did the, the delegation of medication. But it might be helpful to have someone looking at some of our other student policies and just provide a service to this committee. And so, that's what I wanted to add my two cents in.
Mrs. Monica?
I'm trying to remember. Sharon, do you remember how many years ago it was that we did that? Was it? Okay. So, so here's, here's my concern with that is it's expensive. You have to pay for it. You gotta pay for the book. You gotta pay for the consultations. And not that I wouldn't love to have a brand-new policy book that was all up-to-date and great and accurate. But the truth of the matter is, every single policy has to be adapted to Burlington because the book doesn't do it unless you pay them to do it. And even then, you still have to look at everything. So, the one that always comes to mind, the one that jumped off the page at me from the very beginning of doing this, was the policy for making policies in Burlington is that in order for a policy to pass, you have to have four votes. You have to have three-fifths of the entire, no, not three-fifths, two-thirds of the entire committee, which is four votes out of five. And most towns don't have that. So, the very first policy that we looked at when we, when we got this book was, oh, whoops, this isn't our policy. We have to change this. And that, and that's fine. I just know that Sharon and I went through an awful lot of policies trying to fix them to reflect Burlington as opposed to what the MASC policies generally say. And we never really got through the book, but we ended up paying for it. And I guess it was kind of a frustration to have to spend all that money. It was thousands of dollars. And, yeah, I think at the time, it was 11,000.
If I could interject...
And it was back then. I'm almost done. And so, I'm just concerned about jumping. We've done it. And we know that it isn't simple. So, if we do it, we need to know what we're getting into. That's all.
Right. I'll let other people comment first. Go ahead. Mr. Murphy?
I think like probably the rest of us, I'm always interested in learning and doing things better if we can do things better. I'm a little, I don't know if skeptical is the right word. But I think bringing in, if the suggestion is, is use a MS, MASC rep to do it, to come in and tell us how we can do things better, I think is, I question as to how much effective, how effective that's gonna be in really helping us. I think it's just too open-ended and too broad. I think if there are targeted areas, and policy is obviously one of them, that we think that we might be able to draw on their expertise, then I'm, I'm all for it. But I would rather, I'd rather do it on a targeted, specific basis. If we need help with issue X or issue Y, and they might be able to assist with that, then I'd be, I'd be willing to consider that certainly. I, I don't particularly feel like just having some kind of a general, open-ended discussion with somebody from the MASC about how they think that there's a better way to do things than the way that we are doing them. I just think that's gonna be a circular discussion. I do share Chris's, I think the idea of getting assistance with the policies, I think is a great one because it's just a morass that, you know, frankly, it'd be great, it'd be better if somebody else could do it. But, you know, it's, her point is well-taken. It's expensive. And we've, we've tried it once. And it was like trying to run through quicksand. So, I'm not sure there's a better way to do it. And if that's something that everybody thinks is a good project to bring, to bring in MASC to assist us with, I guess I'd be willing to listen to that. But in a, in a budget year where we're, we're looking at every nickel, I mean, the idea of spending $10,000 to MASC to kind of get halfway through a process that we already did with them 10 or 11 years ago, I guess I'd question the benefit of that.
Do you want to comment, Mrs. Russo?
So, I've attended many of the MASC's, MAS, yeah, MASC conferences. And there have been very interesting workshops. And with those, brought back the information to the board. And then, Dr. Conti and Mr. Larkin, and then moved on from there with it. With regard to the policy review, I echo Mr. Murphy about the cost at this point. You know, we're saying here, looking at teachers, and it's hard to talk about a book and updating policies. So, I do think there might be a need, and I'm not sure how many policies there are, of looking back and saying, what policy, because we did get caught last year with a policy from, or policies from 1970, something. And maybe if there was a time cutoff, that we, we could individually, you said you worked with Sharon, I could work with Sharon, or just look through. And if there was a policy that was, pick a date that we might not be comfortable with moving before that, a year, maybe just target in because doing this work in another district, it's very overwhelming. And I think you need more of a focus and a reason in just having, let's look at the policies. And having that experience last year, I think that date gives us more of a focus if it was something we want to look at.
Yeah, Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, I wasn't quite sure where we were going with this agenda item. But now that I have a general, it's kind of a wide open thing.
It's only one aspect, yeah.
When I first looked at it, and when I heard the chair's comments tonight, it kind of brought me back to many, many years ago, the selectmen were thinking about how they could do a better job as a, as a board. And they went off on a retreat someplace. I don't know where they went. But they went off on a retreat and they...
They were golfing.
Yeah, they probably did. But I think they, that's what I was thinking of.
They just spent the day down in the Marriott, I think. They just got a room. It was just like a, they didn't go white.
It was kind of like, you know, they, they just put their heads together and tried to come up with, with a long-range plan and a short-range plan. I think we do a fair amount of planning on this committee with the assistance of the administration. But I don't know if MASC has people that come out and work with committees, come to, maybe we'd have a special meeting some, some Tuesday night and have somebody from MASC come out and talk to us about long-range planning or something along those lines. That's something that would interest me, I think, more than working on policies. I, for one, I'm not a big fan of going through the policy manual and trying to find that in detail where we might not be in compliance. I think that's, I think we, our time could be better spent on long-range planning and trying to implement some of the big goals that we're trying to implement in maybe a more effective way.
Well, I also see it as broader than just the policy manual. And what I was, would like to see is for us to have our representative Dorothy Presser come and talk about what resources are available. For example, I'm not sure that we need to buy the book for $10,000. That's not, that's not a given. So, in terms of cost, we could find out what would it cost for them to give us assistance. I spent some time talking to Sharon, getting a little of the history 'cause that review had happened before me. The best practices is considered that school districts should be looking at their policies every three to five years. So, 11 years ago, people did work on it, and it was frustrating. But especially after we had the, we were aware that our financial policies were so out of date, it made me think that I don't want us to be stuck on another issue like that, that we don't know about. I don't, I don't want to be surprised. And so, I, I've looked through, I mean, Sharon and I went through it. I looked through the book a little bit. I found just by looking through one chapter, things that I know we're out of date on. And it's not my favorite idea of what to spend my time on. But I think it's really important. We are a legal, you know, body. I think that we need to be sure that our policies are up-to-date. And we have some wonderful staff who are looking at specific policies as they come in. So, I think that things that have changed in the laws, we, I believe we're pretty well up-to-date. When this new special ed law has come in, our special ed director has come and said, "We need to change this policy." When there are new public health rules and regulations, our nurse director's been wonderful in this last year, bringing us issues and policies to update. So, if we, just talking about the policy review, I think it's really important. I, I don't want to see us in a position that we were in two years ago where the financial policies weren't up-to-date and weren't being followed. I mean, I know, for example, the Wellness Committee is currently looking at their policy manual. And I've, you know, encouraged, as a member of that, I've encouraged them to do that. But in looking through it, I found that it says that the Director of Food Services is our wellness director. So, we are out of our own compliance. We're not following our own policies. In fact, the Director of the Wellness Committee is our, what's his title? Matt Jackling, what's his title?
Director of Health and Wellness.
And I think that's much more appropriate. So, when they redo it, they're gonna, I think, come up with something that might say Director of Health and Wellness or the Nurse Director or, or another designee of the superintendents. But to go through, I mean, so, that's just one policy that I've looked at. And so, I don't see that we'd need to sit at a committee meeting and do it. It's not something I would look forward to, but I'd be willing to work on that in a subcommittee. And if there, especially if there were resources. So, I personally think that a policy manual review is really important. I think it also protects Dr. Conti and the school district. So, that's one area that I'd like to see. But then to step back, I, I would like to have the MASC representative come and talk to us. And that's free. Talk to us about what resources are available. How much would it cost? Is it a $10,000 cost? Or is it a $3,000 cost? Or, you know, is it something that they can give us, a booklet? And we could have a subcommittee and we could, you know, those kinds of things. I, I don't think it's gonna be easy. But I, I don't really, I feel really strongly about not going forward and pretending that we don't have policies that we haven't looked at in 10 years. And I, I mean, your idea of looking at a certain date makes some sense. But maybe the wellness policy was eight years ago, and we say 10 years ago. And then we miss things that were not in compliance with our own policies. So, I, that's another reason. Another reason is that I know that, that MASC can help facilitate things like a retreat and what you were describing, Mr. Nelson. You know, and so, that would be something that we, as a group, would decide, what is it that we might want to look at? What, you know, do we want to look at long-range planning or short-range? What, you know, do we want to look at long-range planning or short-range planning? Or is that something that we feel is covered? Maybe we feel it's covered because Dr. Conti and the district have done, I think, a really good job with our school improvement plans. Is that the new word? No, school, no, planning for success, that's the new term. You know, I mean, and so, we review that every year, and maybe that isn't what we want to do at our retreat. Maybe there are other areas. But I just wanted to be open to the idea of, what is it we, you know, when we go month to month and look at the topics that we usually look at, is there, are there things we're not looking at that would allow us to improve the school district and improve the functioning of the committee, so that we can provide the best education possible for all of our students? So, when I was going to interject, it was about, it's not about buying a book. It's about what are the resources? You know, and we then would decide what we, as a committee, wanted to do. So, if we were to have Dorothy Presser come, I wouldn't have, I mean, there are specific things I want to know about, and specific things I do know about, but there may be other resources that we don't know about, that might cost money, might not cost money. But I'd love to, if the committee's willing, to have her come and talk about those resources. And then we can see if there are things that we would like to pursue, that would help us to do continual improvement for the committee and for the district. So, that, that's it. Yeah, Mr. Murphy?
Personally, I have no problem with that. I'm always willing to listen. But frankly, my, my general philosophy, I guess, over the years has been that I look to the administration to give us direction in terms of what the system needs from an academic standpoint, and, and as opposed to me coming up with a roadmap that I'm foisting upon them. They're the professionals in this group, as far as I'm concerned. I'm an elected official. So, I'm all for listening to people who have ideas and who can give us hints, or can give us assistance, or can provide services that might be beneficial to us. I'm all ears, I'm happy to listen to them. I don't, I don't feel frankly, and I've been doing this for a number of years, I don't feel qualified to be telling the superintendent of schools with a doctorate in education how he should be running his academic program. That's not, I don't feel that's my job. So, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to do that, and I'm not trying to find an easier way or a way to go about doing that. We do budgets, we do, we do policy, and, and that's what I focus my efforts on. And if somebody can come in and help us with policies, then I'm all for it. But I'm not looking to expand much beyond that personally.
If I had a specific thing I was looking for, like, I know we had presentations from MAS C on various things in the past, specifically on policy. It was, I think, $11,000 11 years ago, it's probably a lot more than that now. But I think I was the chairman going into the year when we got that book. And I just never forget my frustration at the two of us spent hours and hours doing one section at a time, trying to make it work for us, because they're generic policies, and they just don't work the way they are. It's a lot of work. We've also had presentations, and in fact, we hired them to do a superintendent search at one point. We've had NESTEC do superintendent searches, we've had MAS C do them. So, we have, some of us have, in the past, had quite a bit of interaction. I think that they have certain things that they, they have wares that they sell. One is superintendent searches, another is policy, and I don't know what the others are. I have taken part over the years in a couple of these retreat things. Recreation used to do them when I was the representative to the Recreation Committee. And they're good, you know, you kind of sit around and have a social occasion where you, you talk about the goals and all, where you want to go with various things. I kind of agree with Tom, though, that relative to schools, I think we have more of a supporting role. We represent the community, but Eric runs the show with a lot of help from a lot of other people. And finally, if we were to have some sort of presentation from MAS C, I'm concerned about how long it would be, frankly. I hate sitting and listening to these presentations. And if it's something that is more than 20 minutes, I would suggest a separate evening where it's not a regular school committee meeting, where you could just listen. And frankly, I'm not real interested in it, but if everybody else wants to listen to them, okay.
I kind of echo Chris on having that presentation, and, you know, keeping it to a very specific time limit, almost being aware of ahead of time what it is they are going to be bringing forth to us, their ideas. The policy will probably be, to do it well, will be over a year. So, to start with a date, specific, looking back, in my opinion, is important. So, then you can keep going with it versus taking chunks, you know, that it's, and it might outlast me on the board. You know, I'm willing to start, but again, it might outlast, and if it's done well, it's going to. It's not something that we can have...
It'll last all of us.
It's not something that, that Ms. Gilbert has a lot of spare time to work on with us. So, even if we are a school committee, we still, subcommittee, we still need her expertise and help, and we can't jam this through every week, or, you know, it needs to be a very defined time, looking at the policy, and there needs to be a lot of parameters around it to start with. And I don't think MAS C can really help us with that. That has to be internal, and what is it timewise that we can afford? You know, but I've attended their meetings in November, they've been excellent. It's been the pick and choose, too. You know, we all have different things that we enjoy, or we're more interested in, so, you know, seeing what it is they're offering, and then maybe, you know, each picking something that, that would be of interest more so.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes, I think I agree with everyone so far, that it's quite an undertaking if we're going to sit down and try and review our entire policy manual. It is the job of the school committee to set policy in the district. And I think over the years, we've been a little bit reactionary when it comes to policies. When something comes up, we take a look at one of our policies, and we see if it covers it, and frequently, it's outdated, so we, the administration will help us update it, and sometimes town council will help us update it, because the laws change, and the needs of students change. I don't know if that's a bad way to do it, because things happen over time, things evolve, students' needs evolve. And I understand what Martha was saying, is maybe we should be more proactive with some of our policies, more than reactionary. But as I sit here, I, right now, I can't think of a lot of our policies that we haven't looked at. We've looked at a lot of policies over the last four or five years, and a lot of that analysis, I think, has come about as a reaction to something that's happened. But I think most communities are probably doing it the same way. I don't think we're any different than anybody else. I don't think anybody monitors us, per se, for compliance with different things. It's nice to be, to make sure that we're up to date in terms of, if there's any state laws that, I know recently, there were some state laws that changed about disappointing students on IEPs, and we looked at all of our, we looked at our existing policies on suspensions and things of that nature, to make sure that we were in compliance. We had town council take a look at what we had, and he made recommendations. So, I think we've done a pretty good job over the years reacting to changes in society and changes in the law. I don't know how proactive you can be, because sometimes you can't change them until the laws change. And then when the laws change, everybody gets a memo, and we all sit down and we try to, we try to update them. I don't know if I have a real strong appetite for spending $10,000 or $20,000 on an outside consultant to look at our book. I'd rather do it in-house. Quite frankly, if anybody's willing to sit on a subcommittee, and maybe we look at, one year, we'll look at a certain number of policies or certain areas. If MAS C has resources available, it's going to cost us a lot of money if they want to come out and talk about what resources they offer. I don't mind listening, as Tom said, you know, if they want to make a presentation, maybe we'll get something positive out of it, and maybe we won't. But I think it's a good conversation to have, and if we want to invite someone to come out, I'd be happy to listen.
I also, I just feel like there's a lot of jumping the gun and basing things on what happened before, and that's another reason that I'd like to, you know, have Dorothy come. You know, I'm happy to suggest that she not present for more than 20 minutes. We don't need to spend all night. There's absolutely no need to spend all night on it. We could come back to it, you know, at our own desire, and have a conversation that night and other nights. So, I don't, I feel like people are jumping to, well, it's going to take us all night to hear their presentation, and that's not what I was imagining, and that's not what I think would happen. You know, I think that we could find out how much it costs, and yes, if it's $20,000, I don't think that's a good trade-off either. But I don't think it is. So, there's that. I do know that other communities do review their policies much more frequently than every 10 years. So, you say you don't think others do, but I've looked at other, occasionally, I've looked for policies from other school districts this year, and have gone on their websites, and they do have a complete set. Now, that complete set that's on their website that came from MAS C probably is very expensive. So, that may not be what we want to do. But we could, for example, just go through the policies we have. We don't have to go, we don't have to start with the generic policies. For example, Mrs. Monaco, we could start with just what do we have, and are we following what we do? You know, like the wellness policy that says that our food service director is our head. We could just update that.
It's a good idea, to update it.
Yeah. And so, but I would like to look through all of the policies that we do have. So, that's another area that might not be what people are expressing a concern about.
But they're not going to help us with that.
Sure they would. Sure they, well, we can find out, if they would. I don't think it's their only purpose is to sell us something. So, maybe that is, and we'll find out. I also think, I agree with you, Mr. Murphy, Dr. Conti runs the show. We're not here to set how all the details happen. But I do feel that, as you said, our two main responsibilities, other than saying we want Dr. Conti to be our superintendent, is policy and budget. And that's why I think I focused on this policy issue. When I looked through the policies that we do have, I have a lot of concerns. Not big concerns, you know, not things that are, but given what happened with our financial policies, I think it's really important that we take a look, but also that we just hear what MAS C could offer us. And in the two areas that I'm, you know, are the policy review area, and the idea of having a retreat, to me, has an appeal, because then we can put aside the business and say, what are the other things that we might be able to do to support the superintendent, to support the school district? And we could choose, we're not going to go to a retreat that somebody else picks what we're going to talk about that day. So, and I don't see it as just a, let's go hang out, although if we did a retreat, I'd probably suggest that we go out for dinner afterward, you know, because that would be nice. But what would we want to accomplish in a retreat? I mean, one example that came to, I was, when the students came and presented from the view committee, they wanted to see certain kinds of training for staff and administration, they want to see certain kinds of programming for students. I mean, we could do a one or two-hour, you know, workshop on the issues of diversity and equity and unconscious bias that we're asking all of the district to do, so that we would have a common vocabulary, for example. So, those are, I mean, but, but if the committee decided, gee, you know, after hearing a presentation, that might be a great idea, and it has nothing to do with what I just said, that's okay. I don't have one thing that I want to see out of this. But what I'd like is to continue this conversation, and I think that having a facilitator can be helpful. I think that Dr. Conti's very helpful in facilitating a lot of our conversation. He brings us the information we need, he takes care of the school district for us. But I think there, I'd just like us to be looking at ways that we could improve, so we can help the district. And I think this is a place we could start thinking about it. So, yeah.
Just one thing on the, on the policy, the update part of it. I'm not so sure somebody from MS, what was it?
MAS C.
We're not building buildings, so it's on MSBA.
No, it's a different one, yeah.
They're not going to, they're not going to look at, pick a policy and know whether we're following it or not, because they don't have the institutional knowledge of that.
They would be a facilitator.
Well, but now you're talking about getting, getting a facilitator, consultant, whatever we're going to call them, to sit down with us and go through every single policy and say, is this what you guys are doing? If not, you either got to change your practice, or you got to change your policy. Okay, now, under the next one. And then, we've all seen the book, and to me, that would be a very time-consuming and cumbersome process. And if we're paying a facilitator to go on that journey with us, it'll also likely be an expensive process. I have no problem with reviewing policies just to make sure we are either in compliance with our own policies, or perhaps we've got outdated policies that we don't need anymore, or perhaps we should update some of our policies. And I'm not sure bringing in a facilitator to assist with that isn't necessarily the right way to go. I think a facilitator would be more appropriate if we're looking to create a new policy, because some new law comes along, or a new issue that's out there that we don't have a policy for. Perhaps we look for the guidance as to creating a new policy. Frankly, I think if we each take an inch of the policy book and go through it, and try to red-flag things, that we say, wait a second, we don't even have the, you know, it's like the accommodated, the revolving accounts that go back for 50 years that we don't even use anymore, or clubs, or at the high school level that, you know, haven't been active for 20 years, because nobody does that anymore. That might be a useful policy, but I think we can do that internally, if we all wanted to grab a handful of them and try to go through them. And then report back to the, to the group at some, whatever date we all picked, for our inch worth of paperwork. I don't think we need a facilitator to sit there with us, as we say, we, you know, we don't have a Latin club anymore, because nobody takes Latin. And that's probably a bad example, but the point being that there are outdated things in there, that they're not going to know whether we do or not, they're not going to know whether we followed or not, they're not going to know whether our procedures are such that we should be changing that are tweaking it. That's up to us, we're the ones that know what goes, what we do in our district. So, I would, I have no problem with updating our policies to the degree they need to be updated, or weeded out, or touched up, or whatever, however you want to put it. I just, I don't see the need to get a facilitator involved. Facilitator, to me, even the word facilitator, that connotes there's an issue of some sort that we need somebody to help us work through. And I don't, I'm not aware that there's that type of a situation where we need a facilitator to help us work through anything right now. If somebody identifies an issue... If somebody identifies an issue that might have, we'd have use for a facilitator, then while he is, I'll listen to it, and if I think it's appropriate, I will support the request. But to have a discussion without really having any specific point to the discussion other than just to talk about things, I'm not quite sure that that's going to accomplish a whole lot.
I guess I'd like to ask if people are willing to have her come and talk about it and see what actually they would offer. Maybe, I used the wrong term, and maybe it wouldn't be a facilitator, maybe it would be, and maybe we decide we don't want to use any, I mean, we have the option to say yes or no to anything, it's our decision as a group.
As I said, I'm willing to listen to anybody, but I'm not willing to buy into whatever they're selling unless I have a thorough understanding of what they're selling.
Right, exactly, that's why I'd like to have.
Whether or not we need what they're selling, in my opinion.
Chris? Martha, I share your concern about the policy stuff. I sort of feel like I was where you are back a few years, and I'm willing to volunteer to help you with that.
Oh, is that a motion?
No. What Sharon and I did, and we got through a lot of it, but not all of it, was we took a section at a time because the sections are, you know, about different things. And I'm willing to do it with you, help you with it, to, you know, as Tom said, an inch.
Yes, I'd be willing to volunteer, too, to spend time on this, certainly.
Right. As far as I'm concerned, if MASC had some presentation they were doing about, not cow pies, but maybe blueberry, I've been there, done that with the policy, which is why I'm just sort of reluctant to sit here and listen to it again. If it's a brief presentation, I'll listen to anything. But as far as doing the policy work, I'm perfectly willing to help you do it, work with you, do some more sections, but I am not interested in a facilitator because they have no clue about us, only we know about us.
Go ahead.
If we do have her come out, I'd like to see a list of everything that they do or potentially could present, and then for us to be in advance, so then we could maybe tailor it to interests that we have or some needs that we might see in Burlington, too. And I just want to be very cautious, I mean, I'll help you, too, but we just need to be very cautious of Ms. Gilbert's time. It takes a lot of work, it's easy for us to go through and say, change this, change that, do this, do this, can you find out if this policy is being done in this way and talk to that department head? But that, a lot of that's going to fall on her, and we need to make sure we don't overwhelm her and give her that time.
Maybe Dr. Conti could identify someone else who could also help in terms if there were things that needed to be looked into. So, no, I'm looking at you, not you. But, so are people in agreement that we can invite Dorothy Presser to make a brief presentation, maybe 15 or 20 minutes, and then we can discuss whatever we want, and we would ask her to send us some information in advance? Is that agreeable? People agreeable with that?
That's fine with me.
Well, like Kristen just said, if there are things we could choose of her to spend her 15 or 20 minutes on, that would be helpful.
Well, do you want to say something about that?
Just want to make a suggestion. So I think our next meeting, Sharon, is June 11th. Again, we probably have, it's going to be a high school-focused agenda, but we can certainly bring a list to the committee to look at on June 11th. And then, so again, if she were to come, it wouldn't be that meeting, it would probably be a meeting after that. So if you, and if you agree to have her come out again for 15 or 20 minutes, Ms. Russo, we can give you a list of topics, we can discuss that, and then give her that direction for the meeting on June 20.
Twenty-something.
25th.
Also, I just want people to know that in addition to being our rep from MASC, that Dorothy was on the school committee in Linfield for about 22 years. So she has a lot of hands-on experience as well, so she's not coming from a blank, you know, aspect. So are we all set, then, on doing that in the future?
I have a direction.
And I just thought of something else I was going to ask about, which I now.
I have some other new business.
Okay, all right. So, Mrs. Monaco, more new business.
So I have a note that Sharon left for me tonight. It's dated May 14th from, I'm not going to say her name because I think she might have spoken in public if she wanted me to use her name, but it's a friend, a constituent, who thanks us for our public service and would like to say that as nurturers of the next generation, Burlington Public Schools should model and teach planet survival. Thus, she would like us to consider no more plastic straws nor styrofoam containers being used in the schools. And I figured you, Martha, would like that, and I think it might be a good idea because I think global warming is getting a little out of control. So I wonder if it might be something we could look into?
Well, maybe coincidentally, maybe not, we have a request at our next meeting. I think you're going to have some representatives from the Student Environmental Club.
Excellent.
I think they heard about the VIEW Committee students coming in, speaking to you, and wanting the district to make some changes. I think this group of students is going to be coming in and asking you to consider some of the same things from an environmental perspective. So I think that'd be a good way for us to jump off the conversation, and then we can discuss as a committee how to move forward and see what the kids have to say.
Great, that's a good idea.
You all done?
Yes. All right.
Well, I guess I should thank the chairman for not being available last Tuesday for the music graduation. It was held at the Crown Plaza Hotel in Woburn, and it was just a wonderful event. I want to congratulate all the participants. It was the marching band, it was the color guard, I think they call it something else in the fall, but in the winter, they call it the color guard, and the chorus. And I had a chance to have dinner with the folks who run the department, Mr. Middleton and all of the assistants, Julie Weller, I think, is in charge of the choir, Mr. Buxbaum is in charge of the marching band. And they just did a wonderful job, and they figured out how to hand out hundreds and hundreds of awards in about an hour. So everybody was happy, everybody was happy with that. They had a disc jockey who played at the end of the presentation, so they all, I didn't hang around for the disc jockey piece, but it was a nice event, and we're very fortunate to have so many talented people. I also had an opportunity to listen to the marching band Monday. They were at the Chestnut Hill Cemetery for the annual Memorial Day performance. And I said this when I spoke last Tuesday night, they sound like a college band, I mean, they're just incredibly talented and.
Fabulous.
And what great performers they are. So congratulations to them all. I would also be remiss if I didn't recognize the track team. They had the Division III State Relays the other day. I think there were, my son said, there were 60 teams performing, Burlington came in fifth out of about 60 teams that performed. They wanted to come in a little bit better, but they were pretty close to, everyone was pretty close to doing their personal best. I wanted to recognize Rashad Prakash, who I think is going to Cornell University. He did something I don't think anyone from Burlington has done in years and years. He came in first place in the two-mile, he came in first place in the one-mile, and he anchored the 800-meter relay all in one day. He ran three lengthy races in one day. He won three state championships, and congratulations, I think he's going to the All States probably this weekend. That was the Division III. They also, a few weeks prior to that time, the boys' track team won the Division III State Relays. I think that was in the paper, many of you know it, but I forgot to mention it. So congratulations to the boys' track team, they had another great year this year. I think the decathlon is left and the state championships, and Burlington High is hosting the decathlon once again in a couple of weeks, so we can get some people to go out and watch them.
Yes, Mr. Murphy?
Along those lines, one other update for the chair while she was sitting at a cafe over in Paris.
Having a latte.
Dr. Conti and I both attended the Athletic Awards Dinner last week, and again, as usual, it was a very well-run affair. It was over, I'm still calling it the Stofas in Bedford, but it's gone to.
Whatever it is.
It's gone through four different names since then, I think. But it was a very nice location, they did a great job, the athletic director and the athletic department always do a nice job with that, and the kids and the families always have fun. So it was another successful evening, so I just wanted to let the chair know that we muddled through without a.
Well, I want to thank you both for going in my place, and again, thank you to all the staff who make those kind of award ceremonies happen because it doesn't just happen by magic.
And Madam Chair, just to highlight, again, the boosters did a great job, but I think Susan Turnquist, you all know, has been around for many years, and she's retiring this year, yeah. So I just wanted to shout out to Susan and what a great job she's done with the athletic department, connecting to the boosters, connecting to the coaches, and we'll certainly miss her.
Yes.
Do you know what that means? Well, it means a lot more baked goods for me because she lives two doors down, and she is the best cook in the world.
Are there any other announcements or new business? Okay, is there anyone who would like to, public participation tonight? Do we need, I think we need an executive session, so we do have a need for executive session to discuss contract negotiations and approval of minutes. The school committee will only return to public session for the purpose of adjournment. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, Mrs. Russo?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mrs. Monaco?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, the motion carries, 5-0-0.